Welcome everyone, we'll call the meeting at 9:10. It's a special meeting of board trustees. First order of business is to present a resolution 2025-34. This is a resolution to amend the permanent appropriations. It reads, whereas ongoing process directly appropriate funds according to the needs of Miami Tatchit, now therefore trustees authorize amending the following appropriations in fund 2042, the cemetery, specifically 2042-410-360, which is contracted services, that needs to be increased by $15,000. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Yes.
You have a motion, I'll second it. Any further discussion regarding that motion? Hearing none, may we vote, Ms. Moyer?
Yes.
I'll vote yes also, the motion has passed. Thank you all, I will now turn the floor over to
Okay, thank you very much.
Presentation.
Kind of like when I teach classes, I move around a lot, so. I don't, I won't try to PowerPoint you to death, that's why I use nice little transitions, but this version didn't have my transitions in it, so I try not to just totally read it, read it to you. So, I want to talk about the budget, I guess, proposal. It's, it's different than the budget that was 2026 budget that was approved in, I think, July or August. So, I think it's, it's imperative that we talk about what's, what's different about, okay, and the cost difference. Because I have a couple major portions in this that I would like to talk about and like to propose that we're gonna do a little bit different. After studying the system and evaluating the system, there's, you know, we've come, we've come a long way in the last three months, four months, and so I'm always looking for how to do things better and more efficient, more consistent. In order to do that, then we're moving into 2026, and I have some proposals, okay? Budget overview, we're gonna talk about those, those four major items, okay? So, start, start off with our operations. We're gonna end up, at the end of the year, with about 1,100 incidents, totally. And like any other fire department, we're pretty consistent, it's 80%, medical and 20% fire. Now, when I say fire, I don't mean we're, we're going to, we're going to a lot of fires. When I say fire, we're talking about fire alarms at commonplaces, we're talking about CO detectors and smoke detectors going off.
We had a couple of big gas leaks.
And, yeah, exactly, gas leaks and just everything that you would call the fire department for that you, that person doesn't know, well, so they now in Iowa one, and they get, you know, the gas station down here, the BP station, they had us, they had an unknown substance leaking down the parking lot, and somebody got concerned, that's, that, everything falls under fire. You have your medical runs and you have your fire runs. And when I first came in, we were trying to do this with two people, and the folks were getting it done, but it's not, to me, two people is the worst that we ever wanna shoot for, it's our bottom line, absolute, this is, this is how we can get the job done. And with firefighters and paramedics, in my experience, which has come upon 40 years, they'll, they'll get it done, no matter what, they may not agree with it, but they'll go out and get it done. So, we have done a lot to bring our staffing levels up. The reason we were doing two-person staffing, because we just didn't have the people to pick from. So, we have hired, to this date, probably four or five part-time people, and we are now at 100%, three people across the board, which makes me feel a lot better, and you're, you're a lot safer because of it, okay? We have things built into our system to where, I'll talk about this, where we at least have somebody responding to that second run when we have three, sometimes three and a half people. When I, when I do say three and a half, we're talking one person coming in for a 12-hour shift. So, it's four during that time and three the rest of the time.
And everyone else 24, for the people who don't know.
Yes, three people on duty, 24, and then one person coming in for a half shift, whether it be the PM shift or the AM shift, okay? So, we are budgeted in 2026 for three and a half people, two full-time, one part-time. And you'll hear this word, the comm medic, that's the community paramedic that I'm gonna propose, which is new from what we proposed back in July. Still need to hire probably one or two part-time people to make this thing sustainable into the future. So, right now, we have six full-time, 24-hour A, B, and C shift, that's two on per day, that is our full-time paid benefits staff, one full-time chief, we have 11 part-time staff, and you'll see five of these 11 are starting in every six-day rotation. This is, this is how firefighters, or how fire departments operate with part-time folks. At the end of the year, they can only work so many hours if they're part-time, and I forget what the hours are, depending on the size of your department to be considered part-time folks. So, we get to the end of the year, we add up their hours, but if they work every six day, their hours will never get to the max point. So, what happens, one of our every six-day people, he works every six day at this fire department, and comes and works every six day at this fire department, which equates to every third day like firefighters like to do. That's what we're talking about, so one spot is shared by two people, and those two people work every six day. We have two active volunteers remaining, don't see those folks much, I see that fading away. Our one volunteer lives in town, he's a police officer, Dave Meister, and then we have one volunteer EMT, which he helps us out with the street fairs and special occasions, and she goes out to the venue outside of town, Dave Chappell's venue, and helps out with some EMS duties out there. Okay, 2026 staffing goals, just a little bit of review, every six maintain three on shift. Talking a little bit about the community paramedic. What is a community paramedic and why are we proposing that into our system? First of all, the community paramedic will count as that 12-hour shift per day, okay? We're not gonna work them 12 hours, my proposal is this community paramedic comes in, and that community paramedic's here 40 hours a week, like I work, and it, and that community paramedic is available to support and assist our full-time emergency staff, okay? I'll probably talk a little bit about that here in a second. What purpose does a community paramedic serve? Think of a community paramedic as our fire prevention program. We have a fire prevention program that is aimed at preventing fires. This is something that caught on about four or five years ago in fire departments, is how do we reduce the number of 911 calls that are not emergency, okay? And we have a lot of people that are repeat calls because they have medical problems, they're getting to be older in the community, and, and so, I say this, it's the people that we know by their first name out there, okay, that we, we get quite often, and we have quite a few of those, we have an aging population, so I think this community is, is prime for a community paramedic. And what's our goal, is to reduce the number of transports to hospitals and keep these folks out of the hospital. So, it's a preventative program, just like we prevent fires, we're preventing medical calls. And it's also a very, very good service that we can offer to the community on a non-emergency basis, okay? The advantage of having the community paramedic here on a 40-hour basis is they can also be used, because we're, we're, we're not expecting this person to be busy eight hours a day, she may have a client list of visit two people a day, but she'll also be on call for emergent calls if we need it, okay? She'll also be able to fill in when we don't have paramedic coverage that day, okay? She could be first responder for the second run that comes in. And then again, if, if today we came in and our one paramedic that was due on duty today calls off sick, because that happens, then she can fill in as a paramedic. And then we have that paramedic coverage, again, something I'm shooting for 100% of the time, okay? Again, our community is ideal for this position, it is a full-time position that I'm recommending, okay? This person that, that, that I feel is ideal for this position is our single-role paramedic that we just hired. The advantage, you're not paying 24% into OPNF, high place in fire, you're paying 14% into opers. The community here, go ahead.
That being because only firefighters, she's not a firefighter.
We have to pay her opers now as a part-time employee because she's not a firefighter, okay? So, which is a little bit different. And I, I think this community will very much be in support of that position, and I think us adding this is, is very important, okay? It does fit into our 2026 budget, and to me, it's a low-cost benefit, okay? For what we're getting, it's, it's going to be very beneficial for us. This position, the fact that we will have this position opens us up to some grant possibilities. Can't ever say we're gonna get a grant, Utica? Utica or Urbana? Urbana, we've talked to Urbana, they had a program, they got a $220,000 grant from the state of Ohio for this program, okay? The police department here in Yellow Springs has a community person that, that they use for various purposes. We would be in partnership with them, that's how we start our client list, that's how we start this program out, is we are, we collaborate pretty heavily with, with the community, okay? So, back to our budget, this is a picture, I came in in the morning, and operational readiness is, is what it's all about. I come in in the morning, the medic's out on call, and I look, and I look, and I'm like, these, these, these guys have, this staff has really impressed me, okay? It never went against anything that I've, suggestions that I've had, but I look at our fire truck, and I look at their stuff, and they're ready to go, and they're ready to jump into this thing at a moment's notice and head out the door, okay? And so, folks outside the fire service don't understand, but I look at that and I say, we're all good. Benefit of having three people, you can read it, down here at the end, times when we have four people, we would put two, two people on the ambulance and two people on the fire truck, and then we're able to get two vehicles out the door at the same time. Where we would do that is an auto accident. When we get called for an auto accident right now, we have to commit one or the, one or the other, depending on where we're going. So, the ambulance goes, that's what's our first priority, is take care of the hurt people. Our second priority is a fire engine, so we don't have enough people to staff both, then we have to call the neighboring department to send a fire engine. We're waiting in that case. We should never have the thought that it's never gonna happen here, okay? This happened two nights ago, all right? A typical community, neighborhood, it never could happen here, but it did, okay? This is, it, it happened in Reynoldsburg, which is a little, little area outside of Columbus. I know a lot of firefighters, they've called me about this incident, I'm a mentor to some of them, my son works in this area, but that is why we stand ready on a regular basis, okay? Sometimes we get in that mentality of, well, we don't get fires here in this town. I know we don't, we are ready, we are prepared, you pay a fire department to be prepared for what might happen. And you, you expect us as a community to always be ready for our or your worst day. It happens, it sneaks up on you, and it's, it's, it's a challenge that a person that runs a fire department is try to keep their people motivated, active, and ready, and ready for your worst day, okay? Another reason you're going to hear from me that it is very, very important to have the right equipment and the right support for your folks, okay? When I talk equipment, and I'm gonna talk about it here in a second. First thing I did was I evaluate our equipment when I come into this department, okay? Our air pack tanks that we wear on our back, we have to have those to be a fire department, we have to have those. The standard is basically 15 years on those. We are out of compliance, but the standard also says if they're in good shape, you shouldn't have them more than 15 years, but it's up to the jurisdiction whether or not you keep those. We, we're in good shape here, our, our air packs are good shape, but they're two cycles out of compliance. A cycle comes every five years, so if you do the math, we shouldn't, we shouldn't have air packs older than 15 years. This stuff is getting very, very expensive. One of the main reasons we have to replace our air packs is the last time we had a company come in to do the certification on them, and we have to have them certified, every year, company comes in and repairs them, they said we no longer are going to be able to get parts for your air packs, starting the next cycle, which is next year. So, we're, we're good for a year, I'm comfortable with our air packs for a year, but we have to replace those in the short term. Very expensive, okay? Which brings me to this, we never want this to happen to us, okay? But it happens. This was a fire where a young firefighter fell through a floor, okay? And they were not able to get him out because they didn't know that he fell through the floor. He called, he called what's called a mayday, and it was so hectic, they thought the mayday was called from somebody else, but it all goes back to equipment. And what leads me to why I put this up there is now it's out of our hands. Everything we do as a fire department is going to be scrutinized from the outside at this point. The wife filed a lawsuit against the township where he worked, against the two chief officers that ran the incident, and against anybody that had anything to do with what has happened to this fire department in the past, okay? And after they went through the whole court process, she was awarded by a jury $35.5 million. I don't know where that kind of money comes from, but it happened, okay?
And in this case, it was not just equipment that they didn't have, but the training.
The training, competency level, you know, it all went, come down to training, but they also give me all yours, give me all your records on your air packs, because this guy suffocated, he died of asphyxia, he didn't die from the fall, so show me your records. How old was the air pack he had on? Did he have his mask tested every year like he's supposed to? Did we, did we do a certification on the air packs like he's supposed to? How old was his turnout year? Was it out of compliance, was it more than 10 years old? All these things are gonna get scrutinized, and, and it gives me a basis to tell you folks who need to approve spending money here, that we're out of compliance and we have to do this. Are we gonna get by for the next five years if nothing happens? Yes, we are, but, but if this happens, we're all in trouble for it. Here's our critical needs for equipment moving forward, here's our equipment goals. Here's the number, the, the three things that we evaluated right now that are out of compliance. The battery extrication equipment, there's no compliance standard for that, but it's, but they're old.
That's jaws of life.
Jaws of life, okay? They now have equipment that will save you five minutes. If somebody's trapped in a car down here at Hyde and Xenia, right? If we have these new tools that I recommend that you purchase, you're going to save five minutes. And when somebody is bleeding to death, five minutes is the difference between night and day, okay? So, right here is where I see critical need, we need $200,000 right now. Ambulance replacement goals. We're taking delivery in June 2026, hopefully, hopefully, June, keep my fingers crossed, of the ambulance replacement, okay? Our recommendation, my recommendation to you as a fire chief, in order to get our $200,000, is to take that money, you have allotted for an ambulance, and finance it, okay? And in that package, hold back about one and a half years of payments, so hold back the 2026 payment, that's only gonna be half, in the 2027 payment, in that $200,000, hold it back for payments in the future to give us a cushion moving forward, okay? This budget that I'm gonna show you, we have it built into the budget, the payments for that. So, it's about $85,000 a year for that ambulance versus paying cash for it, okay? Or is that?
Should be, should be 55.
55, okay, it's okay, 55. I'm sorry, it's okay.
I think.
Yes.
And when we say ambulance fund, that's our 2281 account. How that gets replenished is through our ambulance billing, okay? And I'm gonna go back to our, my original goal for our response vehicles, which is also built into our budget, five-year payment, is our pickup truck and our Explorer, okay? And the goal behind the pickup truck is so we have, I call it a chase vehicle, that's where that third person follows the medic to a call, and when our medic is our ambulance to a call, and if the paramedic's not needed, he gets back in the pickup truck and goes back to the station, it is available for the next call. So, that person can first respond until the ambulance from either Seonerville, Houston, or Xenia Township gets there to back us up, okay? Just last week, we had three calls come in at once. We had a tree on fire out near John Bryan, we had a lady fall off a curb and break her leg, and then we also got a report of a heart attack. The ambulance was on the broken leg, I went to the heart attack, the captain went to the tree on fire, all at the same time, okay? Xenia Township showed up with their medic and said, oh, by the way, we don't have a paramedic on our truck, and this was a paramedic call, so then me being a paramedic, I had to jump in their ambulance and, and handle that call. It got effectively handled because we have enough people and enough qualified people on, so that's, that's the reason for the pickup truck. If I'm not here, the second run comes in, and the paramedic or the officer, whoever's in that truck, goes and fills that role, okay? With that, if you would, if you approve the truck as well as the Explorer, we're going to repurpose the current Explorer that I drive, and that is going to be the vehicle that the community paramedic will operate out of, okay? My recommendation is we decommission Rescue 81, like my recommendation before, and that is our 2006 vehicle out here that we only use really at this point with our staffing for one reason, and that's to carry our rope rescue equipment in case we have a technical rescue type rescue at John Bryan Park, okay? It doesn't get a lot of use, but it's, it's, it's an older vehicle, it actually has the worst motor in it that Ford ever built, a 6.0-liter diesel engine that has allowed, there's a whole host of problems, Google it, but, but it doesn't get used a lot, okay? It has very few miles on it, and I think it's, it's worth, it's worth something to another department, and the reason why I'm, I'm recommending decommissioning that. That brings us next to our biggest item that's on the agenda, and that is our fire engine replacement goals, okay? The problem with fire engines is you have to plan ahead to buy a fire truck. They're over a million dollars now, the fire truck, right out here, to replace this fire truck is over a million dollars, but the issue is if we order it today, we're two and a half to three years away from that thing sitting in our bed, okay? So, the funding source, unfortunately, you just can't save for these things anymore. There's not enough money in our budget to save for a million-dollar fire truck, we don't have that kind of surplus. When you have to pay people and you have to pay salaries and you have to pay everything else that goes along with a, a full-time fire department, so we gotta start specing that truck now, if we're gonna replace that thing, and I don't see it sitting here until 2029 or 2030. Here's what our, our apparatus look like at this point, next year, we're gonna sell, sell the backup ambulance, it's, it's, it's a 2006, and it's seen its better days. I chose not to do about $10,000 worth of motor work on it, it has an oil leak, it's, it's, it's a controlled oil leak, if you can believe there's something like that out there, but we got an estimate of about $8,000 to $10,000 to pull the motor out of it and fix, fix the oil leak. And it's, the oil supposedly has been leaking for some time, but it's our backup truck that we plan on getting rid of in six months into the year next year anyway, and so I just chose not to put that kind of money into it. We won't get that kind of money out of it. So, there's a list of what, what, what's planned for next year. Our, our backup fire engine right now is sitting in an out-of-service status, just, just because it's, it, when we had the safety inspection done on it, they said do not drive it because of the brakes, there's pump issues with it, it looks nice, but there are some mechanical problems that I chose to wait until 2020, the beginning of 2026 to have those fixed, our backup fire engine. If our primary fire engine wouldn't go down right now, we could in a pinch use our tanker truck to actually, to use as a fire engine for those purposes, that's me. Yep? Any questions for me?
This is great. You said something's gonna be replenished by ambulance billing, and is that billing, you had indicated several months ago that there may be ways to, would not be undercharging for our ambulance services, is that something?
Yeah, we, we have chose to move forward with, with billing. We, we were underbilling because our account hasn't been reviewed for some time. The account representative for our ambulance billing company said, I don't know why you're billing the same as your neighboring departments, because if they come in and do an EMS call in our, in our community, they're paying, they're, they're billing that, so. I chose to move forward with the standard billing rates. Now, with the standard, standard billing rates, it doesn't matter, most of our runs are Medicare, Medicaid paid, like any other ambulance, you only, you can only get so much out of that, okay? When you bill a full rate, that's when you're billing private insurance companies and stuff like that, and somebody that's driving through town, or, or so on and so forth. or, or so on and so forth. So, it doesn't make that big of a difference, but we're probably missing out on $10,000 to $20,000 a year. So, I chose to tell them, "Bill what everybody else is billing."
I didn't want it. Did like Friday, I just.
We, we, we have predicted that we bring in about $175,000 a year. And so, until I see a year play out, we're still gonna keep it right around $175, $185,000 for the budget. Now, next year, if it comes in and says, you know, we can get $225,000, well, then that's, that's even better. So. Any other questions?
Don't go too far. Hold your clicker, then you can just click me when it's time.
Oh, yeah.
Just let's go back.
Blink your eyes three times.
All right. Let's go to the first one. I, I wanna say that the first six months has been a whirlwind of improvements and changes because you have, uh, someone who came to the township in this role with a ton of experience. And some of the things that were said but not said were that what I've watched and observed is that his, his nature of being an instructor and trainer has permeated the organization. And so, his real focus, what he's doing without saying it, is he's just constantly developing the staff. And, um, and it's super apparent. I, I've watched their behavior change tremendously, like a big cultural shift. You see that in the recruitment efforts and kind of the folks maybe even coming back. So, there's definitely been kind of a, uh, I would say that trust has been reestablished across the township. I see that. I don't get to work with you guys much. I'm sorry for that because I really need to focus on him. But I think that the sense of trust and kind of peace and where the township is kind of maturing isn't, isn't meant to be a a critical word, but just kind of the maturation of where we're headed, where we've been headed is super apparent. And having one more, uh, you know, physician in the organization that is able to do that's been really helpful. He, he mentioned fleet reduction. It's a huge, uh, it, it, it's a huge shift, meaning that it's easy as a volunteer organization to accumulate stuff and trucks and things. Well, there's two things we know when you buy something. You have to maintain it, you have to replace it. And so, thinning the fleet was a major cost-saving strategy that the chief has brought to the table. Um, and even some of these smaller vehicle shifts turn out to be, uh, part of that. So, for example, it's not up here with utility vehicle that is being proposed now. Uh, I believe, yes, I believe becomes the replacement for the grass truck when the new engine appears and which has some small utility rescue capabilities or storage on it. So, you know, eventually that truck gets accounted for in this, in this plan as well. I think it's a really thoughtful, uh, appropriate way to save taxpayers, both in maintenance and replacement long-term. The, the thing that has absolutely happened is that prior to the chief's appointment, we were mostly on a break-fix model, which meant that our assets got taken care of when we needed it. And in some cases, were not cared for, repaired sufficiently. Everything is either in or has moved to preventive maintenance model, which is simply front-loading, uh, a percentage of those costs for repairs, um, in the beginning of a cycle of an apparatus. So, you get the full use and longevity out of it. And when, when we talk about the philosophy of teaching a class at Bowling Green in the, in the winter on finance, and half of that class is on the philosophy and the psychology of purchasing, uh, in government agencies. Because it's hard to separate how we individually feel about, uh, you know, how we use things like debt services, which is what I'm gonna talk about here, or how do we appropriate funds for capital expenses versus personnel expenses? These are, they start at a personal level, then they're expressed in our elected positions. And, uh, I'm not here to lecture anybody. I think you guys do a fantastic job of sorting that out. But it does require a shift. And oftentimes, that shift is rubbing against what we all are experiencing today, which is 15 years ago, I would have called it fatigue on the taxpayers' part. I think we're well beyond fatigue. I think we're at a point now where every ask and every request, uh, really has to be substantiated not by some major, some plan from a consultant, a guy in a suit, but from the actions and the experiences and the trust that's built by doing a great job back here. Now, as a township, you guys have done a fantastic job. I, I don't think that you are gonna struggle. Your track record of getting support, your ability to demonstrate what you're doing, what you've done, I think will speak for itself. But it's a conversation we have to pay attention to, especially when we're, uh, having these conversations internally about how do we fund this thing? Which only really gets to one opportunity, that is, we're gonna have to ask them to buy something for us. Doesn't mean you can't go get a grant. You know, fire trucks are funded annually, uh, through the AFG, and that's certainly a possibility. It's, it's always a wild card. It's probably less than a 5% chance. Um, but it, it's always out there. But at the end of the day, you know, we're, we're ultimately going to have to ask the electorate. And, and really, and I'll stop with this piece. And a- as elected officials, this is one of the things that I observe across the board, and that is this internal struggle with, "I'm taxing someone." Well, that just isn't true. That is not true. You're asking the public to, to decide whether or not they want to tax themselves and fund a particular thing, either a service through staffing and staffing-related costs and expenses, or fleet and apparatus and capital. Um, it's really the citizens who are engaging in the conversation. Um, and they decide. Our job is to just understand what the needs are and present the information and let them, you know, have the civil discourse out there. It should not be an us against them. Uh, oftentimes, it feels that way, but it really shouldn't be that way at all. As you know, for the first time in the history of the organization, we produced a, uh, not a, not a, a budget that is, uh, in, in order to create appropriations, because that's always been present. But we created a formal budget and a formal process for accounting for all spending, which is where the organization has matured to. Look, any organization that's under a billion bucks a year should be able to, uh, you know, manage its funds out of a book ledger. In fact, the township, uh, auditor, state documents, and the handbooks still reference ledgers, which are still very prevalent in tons of townships across the country. That's okay. Small handwritten notes, right? It, it is a very, very appropriate. You get to the million-dollar plus, the $2-million-plus mark, and suddenly spending becomes a lot more complicated. The rules of spending become complicated. The, the, the way that funds are managed, uh, shift a little bit. And ultimately, when you make a commitment to people, to hiring people, suddenly you have responsibilities that extend beyond this year, next year, and five years later. You know, you're essentially, my organizations that I've worked with in the past, we don't, we don't appoint someone unless we can demonstrate that we can carry them through their career. It's inappropriate to do that. It'd be inappropriate to, to fund someone and then realize three years later, you're not able to, to keep them on the payroll. So, you, we, we, we model those out. And we assess, you know, what the, what the, uh, kind of the comfort level of the citizens to support long-term operations, career operations. Um, and then we model it. And then we start buying assets, and this is the new big shift here that we're talking about today. And that is, we have to start looking at capital equipment as a separate, uh, budget or fund or percentage of funds from the operating funds. Because you have to have both. You can't, uh, you know, today, today's environment because of the challenges, it's inappropriate to, uh, have to choose between people or staff and stuff. It takes both to run a fire department. It takes both to really run any government. Uh, you know, whether it's the township cemetery and buying trucks and equipment and staffing that, or it's fire trucks and ambulances or police cars and firefighters, um, both have to exist. And so, using one pot of money to do both is risky. Because eventually you run out of, you know, time and space, and something's gonna have to give. You don't wanna be in that, in that position. I don't wanna come back five years from now to help you sort that out. So, so getting a mindset and creating some capital funding, which is just as easy as creating an operating budget. Because we know what the fixed expenses are. We know what the recurring expenses are. We know what the escalating expenses are. We know what the maintenance costs are. And if we put everything on a cycle, on a budget cycle, that then allows to do planning. If we project out, you know, the cost of goods and services at some point, five, 10, 15 years from now, we don't know it's a penny. And we don't know what the circumstances are gonna be. But we can accurately predict what things are gonna cost 10, 15, 20 years from now. Uh, which really gets into the fire stations and fire, fighting apparatus. Ambulances are five to seven to eight years, probably in this community, probably the seven, eight-year replacement range. Um, but the idea is that the more we know about what we spend, the more we're able to predict what we'll need to spend, the more we'll manage those expenses, and the more confidence the citizens will have to support us in the future. Uh, you know, that's the entire philosophical story of kind of making this shift. And what the chief is proposing, um, is a shift away from, uh, using cash to make capital expenses. It's a brilliant idea when you have excess. It's a brilliant idea when there are no other capital assets backed up. It's the right thing to do. I, I 100% would have done it. Uh, because we had excess, you know, whether we take a payment out of the EMS fund and set it aside to make a recurrent payment for a pneumatic, or we set it aside and save it to replace a medic, they're, they're both appropriate. Because now you always have, say, $55,000 or $65,000 a year, which is about 35% to 40% of that EMS revenue is set aside to replace an ambulance and some of the equipment on it. Uh, in this particular case, we found that he was behind in critical equipment that has to be replaced with no ability to fund it and no ability to make an ask to fund it in a reasonable amount of time. So, I think his request as a consultant, I think his request is reasonable in that it simply re-appropriates operating funds that were saved for a purpose, pulls a percentage back, um, in order to close the gap on those equipment areas that really need to be taken care of. And still provides a cushion of, I think, about a year and a half worth of payments while we pull the payments out of the EMS fund and we'll throw those in the budget 26. So, by the time the first payment is due, uh, in '28, he will already have set aside two full years of payments out of the EMS revenue. So, but the funds are still sitting there live in case they, there was a problem and they need to be diverted. Uh, so there's $100,000, you know, available. But if not used, and we don't, we hope they're not used, then they'll just be used to make the payment. So, we'll actually be ahead. If it turns out that, uh, in, in, in two years from now, you guys are in great shape, then just pay the medic off early. Accelerate the payments. Take that lump sum, throw it down, and then make the balance of the payments and get it off the books. Uh, there's nothing wrong with that. Um, but the idea of debt services is uncomfortable. It's probably the, the largest transition for a township or a village is to shift from a cash mindset to a debt services mindset. And again, most of that has to do with just kind of our comfort level with the idea of paying interest and the idea of, of, uh, you know, amortizing apparatus. The problem is that if you're waiting and saving to replace a major asset, um, then the costs are escalating rapidly every year you wait. And you're pulling cash out of operating funds, uh, in order to, which, which basically makes them not available for operating expenses, preventive maintenance, uh, you know, staffing, whatever the other cost might be. And so, when you're using debt services, either a loan or a bond, um, you know, it's a fractional return. And the people who are consuming the product or the truck or benefiting it are paying for it over that period of time. As opposed to saving the money back here and then purchasing it, um, with cash. So, we're gonna talk a little bit about those two options. Um, but what I'd like you to think about, you know, moving into what we've done here on the fire department budget, which is again, it's my main focus, um, is to establish a capital fund and establish the notion that a small percentage of both the operating revenue and the EMS revenue will be set aside for capital. Um, it will define capital as any, this is a common definition, you can adjust it. But basically, it's anything that has a $10,000 replacement value of, of a one, of a single item or a group of the same items, the self-contained breathing apparatus, the walkie-talkies, uh, tick cameras, uh, turnout gear is iffy. So, I don't know why I would put turnout gear in the capital. But anything that has, um, a 10-year lifespan, and generally, anything that requires ongoing preventive maintenance was, is another common way to look at capital. Um, and we separate that, and our intention is to fund it differently, is to find a way to fund it differently. Um, the second thing that, uh, would be recommended is that we agree to a really basic schedule replacement of firefighting apparatus and firefighting equipment, all of which is located in NPA best practices. Which isn't the law, but it's the best practice consensus standards for the entire country. It's very conservative. It's very reasonable. It's not set in stone, like nothing is ever set in stone. Um, and the only pressure you're feeling is that you knew you needed a replacement engine before I got here. So, the only pressure today is avoiding these eight, nine, 10% jumps in the cost of this thing every year that we delay the purchase. Right? That's the only urgency we feel is we're trying to get it at the best price, um, as soon as practical, at least get it on the books. Like, like the ambulance was a super good decision. Uh, you know, I know it took, it's gonna take three years to build this thing, but you don't wanna know the price today of the ambulance. Like, you've saved a ton of money. Like, there's some really good decisions that have been made, uh, and that was one of them.
Did we confirm that we locked into the price of the ambulance when we ordered it?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you're in contract. Yeah, it's a contract price.
That's really nice.
Yeah, and their costs have continued to escalate. Um, so, and, and we'll, we'll provide a, a scheduled, a replacement. I think what, you know, the, the, kind of the order of operations here is just to have a public-facing discussion about, you know, these are the goals. Then the question's gonna be after you guys deliberate on this and come to a conclusion of what, what you're comfortable in supporting, what you will support, then that then kicks off the work. And so, you know, these are things that the fire department can give you in language, so you don't have to do anything here. Um, you know, we just need you to tell us, "What's this look like?" If you approve the apparatus plan, then that cuts down the amount of fleet. And then with the vehicles that are left, will now be plugged into that schedule. And so, then you'll know, you know, where in the future stuff has to be replaced. Um, at the township level, you know, this is a, uh, you know, the idea that we have to it, it, it mindfully and, which I think you have. I think you had the intention, maybe you've done it. You've, you, you, you've already agreed to this idea that there are capital expenses that'll be current and ongoing in the township. And having a place for those funds, separating them so they don't show up in operating funds from a bookkeeping and accounting process in the future. But, but keeping them as flexible as possible. So, instead of necessarily, uh, you know, specifically targeting them for a purchase, target them as capital expenses for apparatus and equipment. So, you have the flexibility to, to, to address something as it, as it comes up in case anything does come up. Uh, part of this, certainly as we progress into, you know, what, you know, the sources of funding for this particular fire truck purchase, for example, we're gonna have to make sure going into, uh, this next year, we, we've gotta have real-time, um, financial data. It's, it's just critical that, you know, it's like, uh, it'd be like flying an airplane without instruments. You know, as much as, as, as it's difficult to talk about money and funding and revenue and expenses, uh, that is the life's blood of an organization. You know, it's what keeps the organization in motion. And, um, and so, we, we, we have to continue to work as hard as we can to make sure that all of our data, uh, in our accounting system is up to date, uh, as current as possible, that, uh, expenses and revenues are tracked. Um, because in order for us to make these predictions and to do our work, you know, you're gonna have to, you know, sort of, I don't know if you're gonna go to bond council. you know, sort of, I don't know if you're gonna go to bond council, I don't know if we're gonna fund it a different way, but, you know, just the financials to demonstrate that we can sufficiently support, you know, this capital project. Um, we can manage the funds appropriately. All of that requires that, you know, not to mention it gives the public confidence that our financials are accurate completes. Um, so we've gotta really press this going into the first quarter of twenty twenty-six. A- as an outsider, I can't put this on the chief. I think that, uh, you know, he showed up at a time where we had had a lot of conversations about, um, you know, kind of what the future is. We we know that you have, on the operating side, the township has uh, support from the citizens for seven point three mils of operating levy. That's now down to an effective rate of about five mils. So it's two point three mils, um, reduced by uh, oh, two reasons, uh, station over time and property valuation. Um, you guys have spent your money super wisely. You've not continued to ask for increases. Um, and of course, we have the property valuation adjustment that occurred in the last five years.
But we did ask for quite a levy in twenty-two.
We we we.
Been renewed, but we, and we asked for a sizable levy in twenty-two.
You you did, which has also been reduced, uh, I think significantly because of the uh, re-evaluation.
It's not subject to the new evaluations, right?
Yeah, yeah, nothing is subject unless they get replaced or updated. And so the point is you're operating about two mils of effective rate, two point three mils of effective rate from what the public supported today than where you were before.
On on the.
Uh, at the operating.
On the replacement level.
Yes.
The the permanent one should still be more effective than that, but.
No, well, they 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 both have declined. Yes, yes, and they'll continue to decline.
But the replacement level has declined over twenty years.
Yes.
The the other one has only declined over the last four years.
Yeah, so and and my point of that is that as you, as you look at the uh, funding for the fire department, it is a percentage of the valuation of the property that that you protect. Just like insurance is often based on a percentage of the valuation of property. And so maintaining that percentage is important over time. So, um, all I'm saying is I think you're in good standing with the citizens. Now eventually you're gonna have to, um, you know, refresh an operating levy. I think we're on cycle sometime around twenty, uh, twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-nine to take a look at one of those levies. But but getting back to the capital, right now, today, there really are only a couple of options for funding a new fire truck. Which is again, one point three million plus or minus a contingency. Sometimes that's as much as ten percent. Your uh, council, uh, and the auditor will help you sort that out. Um, when it comes time to do that, there's a lot of conversation that goes on here. But it, but what I predicted is that you really have three options. One is five percent, so I didn't put it up here. And then is a grant. If you got lucky and were able to secure an AMG grant for firefighting apparatus, that would be amazing. Um, but really, your options are to get back to the citizens and ask them for, um, a, uh, what I would consider a s- small, uh, permanent operating levy to be used for capital, ongoing capital purposes. Um, or to, uh, do what you've done here, which is to, uh, seek and sell bond. Uh, in order to to buy that. Um, either one of those would be acceptable. You know, what I would suggest is that this is probably a fifteen or twenty-year, uh, asset. Um, and that, what that does is, you know, that truck is gonna get you another twenty, at least twenty years of service, uh, maybe a little bit longer. So fifteen-year, uh, note is pretty common for fire trucks. I know that they can go a little further, but depending on the uh, creditworthiness, kind of the credit status of the of the township. What you're, what you're trying to do is is manage your cash flow and you're trying to have as the least amount of impact as possible. What I predict today is it's a point four, five, point six mil or one mil, um, you know, to, you know, based on roughly two hundred and fifty million, uh, to two hundred and sixty million, uh, worth of property, uh, here in the in the corporate, or the entire township. Um, so again, not recommend today. It's all I'm doing is identifying that, you know, right now, these are the only ways that you have to fund a replacement fire truck. Um, one of these two ways. Um, what questions do you have?
Questions, sir?
Do you suggest we put this on the ballot sooner or later?
Um, i- if if you support this, I would suggest that we, that we get this going. I would be, you know, your.
Like this spring?
Yes. Yeah.
That's just coming in from the outside. I just, my thought was we just passed the renewal. Is that too soon? Or or is November ideal? That, but again, I I I don't have the feel for the bubbling like what you folks do.
And and that, part of that equation is that this will cost about, I mean, a new fire truck is a lot sexier than operating, I mean, payroll, but but also, um, I figure it's gonna come out to twenty-three dollars for every hundred thousand dollar of the valuation. So a typical house in Yellow Springs would pay like sixty-nine bucks for the fire truck a year. So that's, I mean, when we're weighing fatigue, levy fatigue, and thinking how easy of a sell would it be? It's, it's not like these two hundred dollars a year, three, three hundred dollars a year on the bigger houses for.
Yeah, yeah, it's exactly right. And the experience is that capital levies are viewed and voted on very di- and talked about very differently than operating levies. Uh, because it's so tangible and, uh, you know, it, you know, back, it would have been, uh, you know, it it would be nice to separate these, but it's really, it's really a fraction of a mil. You know, even if it goes a point seven-five, we're still talking about sixty, seventy bucks a year at the highest end for the average township resident. Um, you know, campaigns can be run around that, you know, it's, again, it's visible, it's tangible. We we know the age of the truck. Uh, we know the maintenance costs, we know some of the issues we've had with it. Uh, we know the challenge with parts. I I think I I would recommend you try in the spring and then the fall is the backup. Um, I don't, I don't know that if you wait, if if you wait another cycle, you're going to get close to a renewal or refreshing one of the operating levies, which is, which should have a couple of years of space. You know, they like to have a little bit of a take a breather.
So this isn't, um, a, a small levy with boundaries around it to buy a fire truck. This is a levy that will put in place for an ongoing capital. Is that what you're saying?
Well, it it depends. So so this, no, this has, if 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 you sell a bond to buy a fire truck, uh, which is actually easier to to pass than operating levy, of course. Um, so if you do this, it's very specific. If you do this, you'll earmark it for the fire truck. But of course, any excess that comes from this, you know, could be used for other pieces of equipment.
But that operate, that levy, oh, I see, it says permanent there. I was about to ask, is it permanent?
It it has to be permanent. You can't do a five.
Can't do like a.
No.
Five-year levy to pay for a fire, fire truck.
You cannot, county will, the the, uh, in fact, the state auditor will not allow you to uh, debt service something that doesn't have, uh, that you can't demonstrate that you have funds for the length of the note. And your operating, uh, levy will, won't cover the expense.
What you're saying is you can't have a five-year levy on a twenty-year note.
Exactly, yes. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
So we have, when I look at, if you look at the Texas, we have two fire levies now and one note for the building. So will we, I don't know how many people look at that one. We have three levies that are ongoing.
Yeah, you could have three levies or you could have a second bond. Yes. Yes. And and I think the in, I think the answer to the, I think the answer to the what comes later. I think the first question is, uh, you know, do we wanna, i- i- if if we're interested in doing this and asking the citizens to replace their fire engine, then I think, uh, you know, that's the announcement today. These are the options that that we have. So if the answer is not today, cause there's no decisions here today, but in a mea- in a public meeting, you say yes, we think we're ready to pursue the fire engine, then the next step would be to go figure out what the fire engine is going to cost. Because you can't do any of this pre-work until you know roughly what the budgetary is. And then the, uh, county and the state will guide you on kind of the cost of borrowing money um, and what your options are specifically. Then you can do the calculations and then you can determine, even working with the citizens, you can determine what they want. You know, cause they may have, they may say, no, we want, we want this and we don't want this. Or they say, no, we want this instead of this. Um, in fact, we'll give you, you know, point tenths more to replace, to keep up on some of the other stuff. Um, and of course, anything that goes in here that makes operating funds available that are being used for capital.
Anything that goes in.
So if anything gets shifted to a capital funding, uh, budget, frees up operating funds, which extends the operating levy.
Which are twenty twenty-six as payments built into it for capital expenses. Trucks, pickup truck, Jeep's car, SCBA, air tanks, uh, turnout gear. That would all come from one separate, separate levy. Yeah, so a small town, who I'm I'm very good friends with the fire chief, they call it an equipment levy. That's how they bought their last fire truck in a small community. But that equipment levy continues to build and it's able to be used for other things.
Other equipment.
Other equipment.
Yeah.
But we're, yes, we're gonna get a medic in twenty twenty-six, but then we're gonna need another one six years later. It's gonna be five hundred thousand dollars minimum. So those are, and and so.
We're sure this trajectory is gonna go on?
What's that?
We're sure this trajectory is gonna go on.
No, no, but I think that's a good guess.
Be like this and now it's like this. And it it seems like it's gonna go like this forever, but is any hope in sight that the people who are profiteering off of this are going to get checked in any way?
No, no, we we we've not seen.
It's like the insurance industry.
Yeah, we're we're such a small industry that, um, the fire service is so, is so small. The only thing we can do is continue to extend the life of a truck. And, uh, the the thing that makes us uncomfortable is the lack of maintenance records on the primary truck we have now. You know, we don't know what the inside of the engine looks like. Um, you know, so you know, a great preventive maintenance program gives everybody the confidence that you can extend the life of a vehicle.
Right.
Um, that we just didn't have today. So we're fixing, we're buttoning that up. So anything that you get now is gonna be pristinely maintained. And, uh, and then so that way, six, seven years from now, you can look at it, go, wait a minute, we've got a little mileage. Community paramedics doing their thing, we're not running up and down the road every day. This truck's in great shape. Let's get another year out of it. Let's get two more years out of it.
Is that, is that true with a, why are the fire truck last a lot longer, of a fire truck if we're, if we don't just, doesn't respond very much?
If if you maintain it, it still has to be maintained, whether you respond a lot. It's, it's hard on the engine. Just, just starting an operating truck is hard on the engine. In fact, it's actually harder on the engine to not operate it often. Um, and so the motor and, you know, corrosion and all the stuff that's going on, but.
We we just had the pump tested and by standard.
Pump water?
Yeah, it has to be tested once a year. Took it down to Cedarville, got a company come in and test it. When it came back, now it's got, and now it's got some seal leaks in the pump. It's got a ball valve that's bad, that's bad. It's because it went out and it exercised and it pushed. We pumped the test, it passed, it passed, but it took some work from that truck. Because that truck's of that age, now we have to have something fixed on it. And it's just, and it's just what, really what happens.
That is our oldest truck or our newest?
No, our newest one. Our large fire departments are getting away from, Phoenix Fire Department, for example, they're getting away from taking that big fire truck and chasing the ambulance down the road to provide manpower for an advanced life support. They're choosing to buy a smaller vehicle to have people do that, to leave that big truck sit in the firehouse. But like Fred says, that comes with a price also. If that truck constantly sits, then you jump in it in a thirty-second notice, put it in drive and put the accelerator to the floor for a fire across town, that's also hard on it. But, you know, it's it's just, it's it's what we deal with in the, you know, the fire service industry. We have to have our ground ladders tested every year. We have ground ladders that are very expensive. They test, they break, we gotta replace them.
So I'll conclude here. So the goal was basically just to kind of get you through what twenty-six is gonna look like, you know, what the chief is proposing, kind of their goals. You know, and and at the end of the day, you know, the board, uh, will decide which of those goals can be converted into actionable items. Uh, then he'll do the work, he'll come back to you for, uh, the formal actions you have to take. Um, you know, in the case of the fire engine, it's the, it's the one asset that we're not able to uh, replace or even get started on until, you know, we get some fundings identified and secured, which is most likely, uh, gonna come to the public. And today wasn't anything other than just to formally, publicly, um, you know, put that on the table that it's, it's time to start working on it. And and again, that truck is not gonna show up for probably three years, uh, once we make the purchase. And, um, and so getting into contract, you know, ideally it'd be nice to, if you could project it out, is to get the budgetaries done in the next budgetary, not a spec, but a budgetary, uh, set some parameters and then will the board approve it? Then, uh, at that point, start working on the funding source. Um, and then once you've identified the funding source, then you know, while while that's going on, you could be designing the specifications and getting purchasing ready. And if, if it's publicly supported in the spring, then you can exercise a contract. Um, you know, that could happen as, you know, as early as, like, you know, maybe June or July of of twenty twenty-six.
Were you suggesting getting together a kind of a citizens committee to help to lay the groundwork for this and help them, help them think of, help us think through whether to go the operating levy route or the bond route?
But I would, um, I wasn't ready for that question. Um, I would start with the board, kind of discerning, uh, and kind of getting the details sorted out. And then if you think it's necessary to present the options, you can do that in a public meeting in the future.
But but you, you yourself said the public's gonna decide between levy and note and things like that. How, levy and bond? If if we don't involve the public, how do they decide? Because that's the thing in in Yellow Springs and probably everywhere. Now the board's coming to us for this and they didn't tell us about it and now it's here and they say they need it and it's halfway out the door and now they want to pick, there's this, there's this mistrust that they.
It it it's it's an interesting statement because, and I I hear this, I've experienced it so many times. Th- th- this is, this is the first time that we're coming to the citizens for this particular request. But I would, I would, I would assume that this has been talked about privately and publicly, summaring your record. And if not, I would assume that the citizens understand that trucks and vehicles get replaced from time to time.
I'm not sure they're thinking about it, I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, what what?
They they think they just passed the fire levy, like, why'd you buy, we just passed, why do you need money for a fire truck? We just, we just, we do the levy. They they don't think capital operations, long-term maintenance, they think we gave you money for the fire department.
Yeah, tho- tho- those funds didn't, those funds are for operating expenses.
Yeah, I I I know that.
That's the new one on you.
Yeah, I I I hear you. I don't. I I don't.
Well, I didn't, I think it's just a matter of communication.
Okay. And I I like the dollars.
For a, for a bond, that's, that just means the next fire truck, you gotta go, you know, or the next ambulance or the next fire truck, you gotta go for another bond.
Right.
The permanent operating levy allows you, it it's basically a dedicated savings. The permanent operating levy allows you, it it's basically a dedicated savings account for only equipment purpose, purposes.
Since people get, would have to get used to the idea that. Let me see what I say.
Well, if you think that a notification is is uh like I I.
I I'm not sure of anything right now, I'm just.
Okay, yeah, that's.
That was advocate.
If 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 there is a surprise, uh I think that's just managed through just, you know, active information, right? There's been a shift, right? You've you've been, we've been focusing on staffing. You've had a change in the chief, you've had, it's just the organization has experienced a lot. And so now we're getting to the fleet and capital expenses and we're professionalizing, you know, all of these things, and I think. Telling that story like this will help tremendously, uh you know, if if we do some of the policy adjustments we're talking about. You know, that's showing that we're setting the organization up in the future, so everyone knows what to expect. Um but there's always that first message, which is always uncomfortable. You know, the realization that we need to make a change, uh or that we need to make an ask. Um we talked a little bit about the operating cycles, the fact is there are operating cycles, levies don't last forever. And that should be an ongoing discussion with the public, there should be no surprise. Like, no one should be surprised that at the end of a five-year term, you know, the levy that's renewing, it should be talked about every year continuously. And even the levies that are permanent still have to be refreshed, um you know, the declining, um. The 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 relationship between a levy that is fixed against expenses that are escalating. Um surely is understandable that we know that at some point in the future, we're going to have to update, refresh that levy. You know, it's not, these are not, they 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 can't be permanent. They don't change, it's not like income tax, income tax changes over time, I think that's a fair. Taxing system that will increase over time, but property taxes don't work that way.
Public may not know, well, some people are getting smarter that. The um. The red, these, these levies don't change even with tax, the price of houses going up, it stays flat, as as your house increases in value. You don't, it doesn't raise with it like it would with an income tax.
That's probably the core of the issue is a, is a misunderstanding about the way our taxing system work, we can't fix that today. All all we can do is, you know, plan and budget, communicate and. Um and they're gonna tell you, right? The citizens are gonna tell you what they want, but I I believe that. Uh a request like this is generally much more easily accepted, especially in such as a fraction of the bill, such as.
Yeah, I just did the math, if we passed a point seven mil for capital for a operating levy. I personally would pay thirty nine dollars a year. And that's a message that I can relate to, because I probably wasted that much money this week, this week.
What other questions?
Sure, appreciate it. Hey Chris, I I promise you I wouldn't say anything, but but I I think this might be helpful, could I ask?
Absolutely.
Question, comment, um going back from the capital fund, could you just talk a little bit about on the operating side, what the trends have been in the labor? Uh recruitment, training, retention, the trends, your success with that, just how how? How how that's been going um as a trend historically recently?
Well, the, I I can go back to these five years, I've seen the data and I've seen the results, I I think that uh. I I mean, between us, this community has gotten such a bargain from this fire department that has been firing on. All of its right cylinders for probably decades, you know, for most of uh the last thirty years. There have been virtually no labor costs with incredible response record, uh great staffing, a great culture. Uh one of the last um organizations in this central part of the state. That had been able to retain volunteers and have access to so many quality volunteers and firefighters and paramedics. Um they've just done an exceptional job and. The focus, because they've had such limited resources until recently, the the most recent. Uh operating levy doubled their revenue and then allowed them to put some full-time staff on the books. Because while the township was doing its, I thought, a great job of. You know, serving the community, at the same time, volunteerism just fell off in the state. And volunteerism is what feeds the full-time career firefighter system, there's a pathway. And so all of that was happening at the same time, so in their wisdom, way back here. Somebody predicted that we're not always gonna have volunteers, we're gonna have to start attracting some. You know, some paid staff, so we have enough people on on duty. During that same period of time, you know, the run volume doesn't sound like a lot, but the risks are tremendous. You know, the 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 age of the housing stock in the community, um puts you at particular risk for significant fires, that sort of thing.
Well, the reason I ask is because this subject has come up twice in the last couple of months. At the Green County um Board of Commissioners working sessions for which the minutes are available online and. Both times the conversation was pretty similar, um Beaver Creek spends two point five million dollars and Fairborn spends one point two million dollars. For the same number of staff. And issues around Beaver Creek just paying and 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 just paying more and more and creating, you know, uh staff getting trained and then moving around. And 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 then a related issue that unlike the greatest strength here where the village of Yellow Springs. And Miami Township share the services, my understanding, and I have enough to live with this, but I got the sense that. The Xenia and Xenia Township have, you know, different infrastructure for this and then Beaver Creek, I mean, and Sugar, and then uh Bell Brook and Sugar Creek Township. Have a separate structure of this, but they were just not, seem to be in, you know, imminent sense that all of the Green County fire EMS. You know, organizations need to get together to handle this, this has come up twice. But the bottom line in each of those discussions was, there's no attention to ROI. They they spend what they want and then they go to voters when they're out of money and the frustration there seems to be uncontrolled. Spending on the operating side, so my concern with bringing a capital levy would be to anyone that's thinking about the entire operation. Is it really just the truck or, you know, that, so that's just my general comment, you can go look at the minutes or talk to those people, I can give you particular names, but so what's your sense of this perspective?
So uh so the truck is the driving conversation, uh you know, there there are. Lots of assets in the department that fit on the side of capital. And at the end of the day, what the citizens have to think about is. At three o'clock in the morning or three o'clock in the afternoon, do you want firemen and paramedics showing up? In four or five minutes, that's that's what you're paying for. Now, the market for that, because while all this has been going on, laterals started happening in the fire services across the state. Which is basically uh shifted the value of, you know, my skills, long overdue, quite frankly.
The final lateral?
Sometimes, the lateral just means that I'm a full-time firefighter, paramedic. If I can make fifteen K more a year by going over there, I'm likely gonna go over there. So what organizations have to do is they have to figure out whether or not they can participate in that and what can they afford. In this organization, we just agreed that here are the spending limits. It's not that you're not worth more, it's not that you shouldn't be paid more, it's not that you shouldn't have more benefits, but the fact is, here's what we can accommodate. In this village and in exchange for that, we're not gonna give you five thousand runs a year, we're gonna give you twelve hundred. In exchange for that, we're gonna train you really well, in exchange for that, we're gonna create a nice, healthy culture, we're gonna make a nice place to come to work, so. You know, what you're describing in terms of that, what I sense from that group is certainly some fatigue and accountability. Um in, you know, every community. Sometimes I hear the conversation about consolidation, regionalization, well, that's just not really necessarily true, because it doesn't change the body count. And the number of people on duty and their location to where their core community is, right? So they 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 save the taxpayers tens of thousands, because every day in this community, five fire trucks show from other communities. At their expense to deal with a problem in this community and this community goes to those agencies every single day. The fire services probably overall in terms of government services tends to be highly efficient because of that. Now, there's differences in cost, there's no doubt, um you know, there is no standard fire truck. You know, there's no standard ambulance, right? So there's a little bit of variation there and the staffing and the labor cost can be. Uh i- i- in in the Columbus market, hundred fifteen K in salary only, it's a two hundred thousand dollar per year expense. For a full-time firefighter, paramedic in Norwich Township in Franklin County. You know, here, we're in a fraction of that, um to, you know, to accommodate what the market can can handle. Um what what is your sense about, when when you have these conversations there? What is the core frustration? Because it, because it costs, it it, you know, it costs to operate and to have protective services. Um and and then how do you measure? Because in in the fire service, we we ask this question a lot, how do you measure the return on investment when? The goal is to not have to deal with emergencies, the goal is that we hope that nobody has a fire or a heart attack. Um the, for us, the return on investment is, what does it cost to have three qualified people on duty to go right now? And, you know, to go deal with a problem, right? And how would, how would your group measure that?
I've I've never, you know, said anything in those groups, but because it's been repeated twice in different days and it's in the minutes. I I think the general frustration is that Beaver Creek has let it go, labor costs go out of control and they'll pay anything. And they're 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 paying twice as much as Fairborn for the same number of staff and that this is, there's no ROI and and there's this this incentive to spend whatever you want and then go back to the voters. And coupled with the the jurisdiction issues and that is growing and is affecting our hiring and retention and 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 training and. And but so my sense as a voter in in Miami Township is that, so we just passed two weeks ago. Um a levy and now if we hear there's one for a fire truck, okay, fire trucks are important, I would go for that. But, you know, there's, I'm just telling you around, there's there's a sense that it's. I I that's.
When does it end?
It's going, there's no accountability and then you have to pay more money from voters and there's no accountability and you have to pay more money. The comment I hear over and over is that there's no ROI in government and I think some of you probably know who uses those words and and. I'd vote for the fire truck, but I think that the average voter in Miami Township. Is gonna look at this as more than a fire truck, because they just passed two weeks ago. A fire EMS, I mean, they it it's, they're gonna wonder, or is it related to the, to all the new houses and is it prepared for future growth? Or it's gonna, this is gonna have to be explained more largely in terms of the strategy of the township, more than just a fire truck.
It's just how well we sell it, that's all.
Yes, exactly, it's communication.
Anything else.
It's communication.
Once I think you have to, do you have to sell the idea?
That's exactly necessary.
But but sell them a fire truck and really sell them, when we're really selling a capital fund.
Yeah, the equipment.
But but did you really pass a levy? I I would, let's just go back, let's just pause for a, because you really didn't.
Right.
You didn't pass a levy.
In fact, we got a big.
It's not true.
I don't think the voter was that.
Yeah, you, so 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 the issue is this, right? The question that started this was. How does, how do we make the consumer more informed about what they're actually doing? Because you didn't pass a levy. You did technically, right? You went to the polls, but five years ago, or twenty years ago, which one was this?
Twenty years ago.
Twenty years ago, the re- the residents here said, hey, we wanna have a fire department that has more resources, so twenty years ago. That levy was put into place by the voters and every, and and. In every five years, you have to reauthorize it for the same amount. For exactly the same amount that you did, whatever the last time it was refreshed or renewed.
Yeah, so it started at three point eight mil and since it's the same amount, we have more houses, more valuation, now we're only paying two point three on it. Five years ago, we, I I read a news article, we were selling it, we were paying one hundred sixteen dollars per hundred thousand dollars a house. This time, we're paying eighty two dollars for every hundred thousand dollars a house, we're actually. It's almost decreasing the. The cost for the citizens.
You're paying less, but the fire department's only getting the same amount.
And they think they're paying more, that's the thing, they think they just passed more, on you, actually, you passed to pay less, you passed a levy to pay less than you did five.
I completely agree with this capital funding plan, I'm just saying it's in a larger context of than than I think is in voters' mind. And yeah, but it comes out what Chris said, it's about the communication, the messaging.
Yeah, I I appreciate the conversation, because this is exactly. Where the confusion is between those who are trying to provide services and those who have to fund it. At the end of the day, there's a lack of understanding on both sides that we need to figure out, this is what's going on across the state and maybe across the country. Um so my, you know, my questions aren't. Uh pushing back, it's just to understand, how do we? How do we help the the community understand kind of a complex, um you know, taxing system? That's more complicated than just, you know, saying yes or no, but at the same time, what else can we do? To demonstrate that we're spending appropriately, um I I don't see. Es- especially the smaller the government, I don't really see any waste, now there's a value set of what somebody's worth and what they're willing to pay. You know, for labor, right? That generally is the biggest cost of any of our budgets and that's community by community. Um some of those might be contracted as well, is that right? So we're not a contracted uh organization, contracts, labor contracts have a lot to do with, you know, negotiating.
That's where a lot of the frustration is, and so it's not really.
But I, I think it does help to, when you have a levy, um that you're gonna ask voters to vote on. To put together a committee of people to help. Cause it was a scramble, like it would, it worked, we got the levy passed, but. There really should have been some citizens appointed to help make the case for the levy.
Uh can I, can I respond to that?
Yeah.
Because you asked another question about that, if if you were going to set up a citizens group and this is going on across the state, I I would, as a. As the guy sitting over here, I think that's a great idea, it's not a great idea. To do it for a project or to start with this particular project, I would not do that.
Okay.
And 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 the reason is because of exactly this uh conversation here, which is. When you're talking about spending and receiving funds, public funds, that uh. That's not what you want to come out of the gate with to work on, right? What, ideally, you would, let's say you have a citizens panel. You would want them to come in and learn the backend stuff first, because that's where the costs are understood. You know, coming into an organization and finding out a fire truck costs, you know, one point three million bucks, a life pack on ambulances, fifty grand, right? Or whatever they cost and, you know, this stuff is expensive to uh to purchase, it's expensive to operate or maintain. Um you know, and at the end of the day, someone here has made the decision to put some staff on duty. As opposed to volunteers coming from home, which puts them about ten minutes to fifteen minutes to arriving on the scene, well, today it's three, four minutes. Um which is enough time to to really, you know, get some lifesaving interventions, getting a hose off a truck, getting water on a fire. Uh or getting, you know, drugs and medication, you know, cardiac care started, you know, that's a, that's a big difference, but but the citizen can decide. I think that what you're suggesting is that maybe we're not doing enough to help them understand what they're getting.
Right next to the fire levy on the ballot two weeks ago was the library levy, they both passed. Now, if the library is on the ballot again in six months, it's very hard to understand what the library needs now that it didn't get six months ago, that would be a tough sell.
Right.
And.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just just understand that it it um. If 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 the levy that was expiring. Uh I and I believe the consensus was, let's not complicate or add anything to it. Because had that levy failed, the fire department would have been shut down. Right? That is a, and and that was a no cost, no net change to the citizen or the fire department, that was just a continuation of the existing funds. Um so it wasn't a levy increase, it was no, there was no taxing implications to that. It was simply, hey, we we said we do these things, you've done these things, will you continue our funding? I think that was basically the ask, I think adding anything to that, because we had a similar conversation, would have been risky. And uh as you sense, the apprehension in this space to even talk about levies and taxing issues is just. Uh is is difficult for any elected official, like no one, no one who sits in these roles really wants to ask the citizens for more, nobody really wants that. Um the question is, you know, how do you fund your organization, you know, without asking?
And I think as a department, we have a pretty good track record of selling, explaining our our needs. For example, this building. We had a little more than some pushback on it, but we sold it, we sold it well, it was overwhelmingly passed a levy for. Couple of years later, it was not very much longer, we had an overwhelming need to, for payroll for people to work in this building. I think we did a good job of selling that.
I think we did a good job of selling that need, and that levy passed overwhelmingly. It can be done.
Oh, yeah.
If you do it, you know, if you do it well enough, and if you don't go crazy and, you know, say, we want brand new everything, and we wanna pay the chief double, you know, that's not gonna happen, you know, so.
Or do I sign?
Yeah.
It, it would be helpful to get, so from a group, again, not starting a group, but getting a sense of what's on their mind, you know, what, what are they, what are they frustrated about, right? Understanding that, that just helps what, what Mr. Newtrus said, that, you know, and this more, I think you said the same thing, you know, g- getting the specific information that somebody's looking for is, is always in the township's best interest. You know, they serve you, they, they serve you, everyone works for you. And, uh, I think you have a right to be frustrated, I think you have to make choices, just like we're in our personal budgets, you know, I choose between this and that. Um, there comes a point where maybe that's, well, we see that's what's going on with taxing, where individuals are saying, I can do this one, I can't come along on that one. And the problem is, we're a democracy, so everybody gets to choose, and, uh, and, and everybody may not agree to the same things. I think fire EMS is fundamental, I think, uh, I have found, not only, not, I've, not only have I not found any evidence any waste of any kind, I believe we have underspent and underfunded the organization to a detriment. And, and if you wanted my, look straight at the camera, the opinion here, is that some of this stuff would have been helpful to do it back here. It, our reality is, we're, we're here today.
Your party catch up.
And we're gonna have to address it. And, and if you, if you listen to the, the language, and I am grateful to be a party to this, is that this township has done more with policy and kind of shifting the way it thinks and does things, uh, in the last eighteen months than it has had the opportunity to in the last probably eighteen years. Like, they've made a major commitment, uh, and, and continuously update all of its operating procedures to be transparent and accountable. Still working through, uh, small details, of course, but, man, they've just done a fantastic job. And I, I would challenge any citizen in the township to come in and really sit down with these guys, and if you had a good understanding, if you knew what the value you were getting, um, I think you'd be at peace and pretty comfortable with, with where, where this group is today. I can't speak for the other townships, you know, the other communities, but, that's a, it's a great exchange. I appreciate having it with you. Yes, anything else for us? Sure, appreciate you guys.
So, okay.
Sure. Thank you, Brian.
Just thank you, Tom, on, you know, on this decision to pay Newtrus.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I think again, that today was just a, you guys go across, and I think you have a lot of thinking to do, you know.
And I'd like to see the numbers, the detail, like, the detailed budget numbers.
Yeah, we just gotta make sure that we have the, we're all, we have the same one.
That, that's right, well, we have, we have, we have one more adjustment we had to make, because I, I made adjustments on the labor side that were already done, accounted for, right?
Yeah.
I, I increased.
I have, I have the, uh, I have the job description for the community paramedic. I have a general outline of what that does, so you know. It's plugged into the personnel, uh, sal- the personnel tab, so there's several tabs on there.
Yeah, yeah.
And so that's, that's what we'll share, we, we just gotta make sure.
I'd love to see all of that.
Yeah, next, uh, next week we'll have, for the board and whoever they extended to, 'cause it's an operating, it's, it's simply a draft operating budget, it's not approved by any stretch, right?
Right.
Uh, we'll make one more adjustment, the capital funding is in there as proposed, not as approved. So if you guys shift and go a different way, that's fine, we just adjust it, uh, but you can at least see the numbers of the impact. Um, and then we, I think our current operating budget is, uh, scheduled to go through twenty, uh, six, seven, eight, and probably to twenty-nine, that's, that's how we're currently trending, uh, which takes what would have been a five or a six-year operating budget, and we're probably gonna squeak almost ten years out of it. So, we, we.
And the things, the plans, the purchases that we planned are in your budget, so how does this work? If we approve a budget, are we approving the, the plan?
You only approve the, the, you, well, so fundamentally, you approve the budget, which leaves those things in it. You're approving the idea of the plan, but until it's actually acted upon by the board, as you know, right? So you can.
You mean, we have to approve the purchase of?
Every single item.
SBCs or like that.
Every single item.
So, by approving the budget, we're not approving the plan, we still have to vote initially.
Correct.
Is this a informal budget or a formal budget?
This, this is a formal budget.
Well, I don't believe the auditorium will accept a, a budget that's unfunded.
It's funded.
Well, what levy passes is funded.
No, 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 it, we, so, the only thing in this budget, the, the fire truck.
Fire truck's not in it. Okay, you keep saying capital, I just assumed that that was after refunding.
No, the, the capital's the equipment. He's right, so, so on the, on the, in this, what we have is a capital plan, not a capital budget.
Okay.
So, so.
We've been our operating budget for twenty-six.
Yeah, sorry, that, that's a great question. So it's a, so it's an operating budget for twenty-six, there's some fleet stuff in there, small, like the ambulance is in there, utility vehicle's there, but the apparatus is a capital plan, which, which then shows what's being, uh, we're, you know, we're eliminating trucks on the fleet, so they don't have to replace in the future. That's the stuff that you'll get by next week, probably, is that fair?
Yeah.
Next Wednesday. And then you guys can take action, and then if you take action and say, yes, we're good with twenty-six, that becomes the, uh, what gets put into the appropriations for twenty-six to start with, and then he can just kinda get started on, you know, whatever you approve specifically after that. So no actions need to be by the board today, or, uh, we're just gonna ask you to approve the budget.
So, just to be clear, we were on a path of taking our capital fund and buying an ambulance. And now we're on a path of, we're going to think more broadly about that fund.
It, it, I think the trustees, I think the three of you, uh, have to consider that. That's what he's asking, correct? Only to get more lever- to get more buying power out of the same funds, uh, which then.
And to handle potential risks.
Yeah, it reduces risk, and it also, uh, as the gentleman in the back said, it also doesn't move those items into things that we have to go find funding for, we have funds for. We, we can pay for those things now, uh, instead of putting them on a capital budget and paying for them later. So, you know, that, that, when you have a big pile of cash, all we're doing is saying, we're gonna use some of it for the ambulance, we're gonna use some of it for this equipment that we need right now, and then we'll, we can cover the balance of the ambulance out of future funds, that's all we're saying. So we get more for those same dollars without going back to the citizens. And that's an ask, that's simply, again, you guys will get to, if this was just a presentation to share the thinking and the reckon, you know, the, the ask, basically. But, you know, and we have the trustees not here, so either I or Brian, you can probably catch him off, right?
Um, we got the video, I told him, I was sending it to him.
All right, well, thank you guys very, very much. Thanks again for the comments and the questions.
Thank you.
Anything else for the meeting?
We're not allowed to do anything else, we only do, I haven't done especially anything before.
I nominate a motion to adjourn.
I, some of us.